19, 2018 is now in session. Will you please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, would you call the room, please?
Culpepper?
Present.
Denson?
Present.
Griffiths is excused. Huntington?
Present.
Martin?
Present.
Mia?
Present.
Willis?
Here.
We have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. May I have approved the agenda, please?
I move for the approval of the agenda dated December 19, 2018.
Second? The motion by Commissioner Willis, second by Commissioner Mia, that the agenda approved is written. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Crowe, do we have any announcements or communications?
Um, just your, yeah, no, nothing for me at this time.
I have one. Good evening to our viewing audience and attendees. The Southfield Planning Commission is a seven-member board that comprise of seven dedicated and committed appointees, appointed by the mayor with approval by the city council, that acts in an advisory capacity to the council to make recommendations on text amendments to the Southfield zoning ordinance, rezoning requests, special land use, site plan reviews, the Southfield master plan, and the capital improvement plan. All study meetings and the regular meetings are open to the public in accordance with the Open Meeting Act PA 267 of 1976. Are held on Wednesday evening at 6:30 PM. Meeting agendas are posted the Friday evening before the next meeting. Meetings are available for viewing at thecityofSouthfield.com. Copies of plans, text amendments, the master plan, and the capital improvement plan are available for viewing at the planning department's office, and current projects can be viewed using our online interactive tool on the planning department homepage, Planning Department Projects Online. You can call or contact the planning department at (248) 796-4141 with any questions Monday through Friday. Thank you. That is what I do.
Through, through the chair, there might have been a typo in there. The main number's (248) 796-4150.
Okay. Repeat that, (248) 796-4150. Thank you. Okay? With that, Mr. Crowe, would you take the first line?
There's no public hearing tonight. We only have one site plan, PSP 18-0012. And I'll direct your attention to the video screen. It is a site plan review request of Yukon Building and Development for the renovation of an existing five-story hotel that's currently vacant for an executive stay accommodations along with a revised drop-off canopy and reconfiguration of site parking on property located at 26555 Telegraph Road. If you recall, this is the former Holiday Inn that has been converted to Best Western Premier in last-approved Site Plan 1335 on February 29, 2016. As I've indicated, the project is renovation of the existing five-story hotel for executive stay accommodations, up to 87 rooms. There's a revised drop-off canopy and reconfiguration of the site property. More specifically, the area that's been identified in the blue, existing conditions, current zoning is B3, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. David Dowling. We'll talk about the site plan, and then we have some elevations, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that the planning commission might have.
Excellent.
So, a little background, David, on the project to date and why you're doing this and so forth.
David, would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
I'll be glad to. I'm David Dowling, owner of Yukon Building and Land Development, located at 4051 Hagerty Road, West Bloomfield, Michigan. Project is located at 26555 Telegraph Road, best known as the Best Western Premier Hotel. The project being presented today is remodeling the existing hotel rooms in the attached five-story building, adding 87 rooms to the existing 206 rooms operating presently on site. The five-story hotel located behind the 16-story tower will be entered off of Franklin Road. The executive stay hotel, when remodeled, will have 33 two-bedroom units and 54 executive suites. The first and second floor will be one bath, two bedrooms, without kitchenettes. These rooms will meet the need of the operating hotel that lacks two-room units throughout the existing complex presently. The third through fifth floor will be executive suites. These rooms will be three rooms combined to create two rooms. The new entrance location will be a drive-through entrance attached to the new lobby entering the hotel. The supporting 16-story hotel, this facility will have the use of the existing gym, spa area, restaurants, meeting rooms, and banquet areas. I've heard concerns about parking. This has been discussed in the past. We'll discuss that in the question, if anybody would care to go over that. We propose to start demo as soon as the permits required are obtainable. Any questions? I'll answer any of the boards I'll be able to show you at this point.
So, we have the site plan up here, David.
Okay.
And while you were talking, I showed one of the typical floor plans. This is the west elevation, and I believe this is the new drop-off area.
Correct.
And there, you have a small addition for elevator, I believe?
Yes. In the front of it, there's actually three. Do you want me to show them on the board here?
Well, if these are the same.
Up here? Okay, it's pretty much the same. As you can see, the drive-through, that canopy period is going to be a glass-open top. Off to the, off to the entrance going into the hotel is a new lobby that'll be built. We're taking four rooms and gutting them out, making a hotel lobby entrance area coming into it. We're going to provide a new elevator at that area because there's one that's at the back of the building that was put in when the building was previously, when it was built back in 88. We're entering off of Franklin. There's been a new ingress egress that was put in last November when they remodeled Franklin, and we're, as it's drawn, it's drawn to meet that requirement where that entrance is coming in, and as you can see, there's appropriate landscaping that's been provided for the new entrance area. Most of what you see there doesn't exist presently.
Right. Okay. Commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Huntington?
Yes, I would like you to elaborate on the parking situation a little bit.
Well, the parking situation, from what I understand, the count that's provided today will meet the needs of the hotel operation, including the five-story. There's been some issues. It's been discussed on the two-story, which is only in the remodel stage up to the rough section. We haven't, we haven't provided any other space for that, and from what I've been advised, I'll need to come back and discuss that with the board in the future when that comes up in operating. There's, in that space, there's 56 units.
So, just through the chair, they were previously approved under the 206 units with the banquet facility and the bar, X amount of parking spaces. I believe they received a 40-car waiver.
Forty-car waiver.
Forty, yeah.
Those are based on our older standards. The new standards were applied, so it went from one space per room to 1.3 spaces per room, and we've applied the 1.3 across the Phase 1 and Phase 2 right now. We will deal with Phase 3, which is the two-story, when that comes in.
Okay.
We got to do a little research on whether or not we're going to credit the previously approved site plan and just hold those parking spaces under, under the old standard. Definitely, the new standard would be applied for these new units, but this was just something that we talked about internally only today.
Yeah.
And to, to have this go forward, they've got more than enough space under Phase 1 and 2. It really will be Phase 3 is when we have to crunch the numbers. So, that's, that's the only issue with the parking, is they have more than enough parking for this additional 87 units.
Okay.
It was really the, we were trying to look at the overall.
Right. Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Commissioner Denson?
Thank you. So, when are you going to apply for Phase 3 or, or the other part of the?
I would think it would be somewhere between July, August of next year. I should have this other hotel up and, and in a phase where I would catch up to where that one's built, and then finish them all out.
Okay. And so, what, what are the, and I know you, you're not there yet, but what is the potential of the issue?
Well, I just want to remind, it took two and a half years to go from Phase 1 to Phase 2, and good for you if you can get this Phase 3 in.
Yeah.
But they might have to reconfigure the room count under Phase 3 to make sure that they comply with our new standards and that they don't exceed the waiver of more than 10% total. So, it's really speculation at this point to try to figure out how many rooms they're going to have when that's yet to be determined in the future. And we have often approved shopping centers with a 50/50 max of restaurants and retail. It's only when they get an occupant in there and we calculate the actual needs do we determine, is there enough space? Sometimes we tell the developer, you can have retail on your last vacant space, but you can't have restaurant because that's going to require more parking. So, this would be a similar approach. Whenever we have multiple year, multiple phases, we look at each phase individually and then add it to the previous phase. So, there's the potential that a waiver might be required for this last phase, depending on the number of rooms they have, and then we have to look at what the previous waiver that was granted of 40 spaces to make sure that what's requested in the future and what was been granted in the past does not exceed our threshold of 10% waiver. That's really the issue. And they might come back in a year and say the market requires less rooms but more, more executive suites, or it could be something else, or they determine to chop off 20% of the building because at one time, that building was going to be demolished altogether. So, it's premature to try to speculate what the future parking needs are. They have adequate parking for existing uses and proposed at this time.
And one other thing, the hotel, when it operated in its past, the five-story was 105 unit, which is now an 87 unit. The two-story was 120 units, which is now 56 units. The tower was 220 units, which is now 90, 192. So, the rooms have been, the tower in some cases are three rooms made into two rooms as suites, opposed to all of them being 16 rooms to a floor. The two-story, all of it was converted into suites, so the 120 is 56, so, you know, 56, 57 units. So, just, I know that the codes have changed, parking codes have changed, but the building did operate quite proficiently in the past, under those constraints.
Commissioner Mia?
I just want to make a comment. It's beautiful. What's there now is beautiful. What a wonderful addition to Telegraph. Thank you. It's about time someone put something there. As I've heard several times from Commissioner Huntington, I believe this fits in with the Southfield's master plan. Is, I, from what I can see, it's really going to be beautiful. I really like the, the topiaries and the plans that you have, that you're going to put out there. It's going to be really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you for the beautification of that area.
Thank you.
David, we talked in the study meeting about the canopy. You're going to have a canopy installed on that side. Would you give us some information about that?
Well, it's going to be a new canopy. I don't really have its dimensions, but, I mean, it meets all codes, so it'll be minimum 14-foot off the ground. It'll be a double car wide. I think it's 24-wide. Excuse me just for a minute. Yeah, it's got a double pass wide. And then enters into the hotel, that whole structure, I don't have the measurements, but I would say it's probably 50 feet long, 45 to 50 feet long.
Okay. All right. Next thing, we, we talked about, what you didn't have a definite answer in the study meeting, are you going to have valet parking or you just do it as the other part of the hotel does, park where you can? Have you looked at that yet?
I did not. I expected Mr. Mandala to be here tonight to represent the hotel and the Kiwi Group and address whatever issues you may have had for the operational side. He was unable to make it, so I really don't know a lot of the specifics about how the hotel will be operating.
Okay.
I do know most of it will be ran off the front desk in the 16-story tower, but I'm really not sure how the back end's going to operate.
I, I can add a little insight. First of all, I've been there for several events, including the banquet facility, and they do offer valet parking for big events. The other concept that he had talked about was basically almost a self, self-serve, you sign up for your hotel on your, on your iPad, iPhone, and you just enter in from the back with a code, and you don't even have to go to the front desk. That was one of the innovations that we were talking about, that
Correct.
You register with everything online. It gives you a code. You scan it at the, at the back. It opens your, your room key is on your phone, and it's all self-automated. And then if you need any services, you go to the front. But that was one of the things that he had talked about.
Mm-hmm. Well, today, they, today they're actually seeing that 75 to 80% of everything's booked online.
Right.
And as you just pointed out, that's pretty much how everybody operates anymore.
Commissioner Huntington?
Do you have a designated area for snow removal?
I'm sure we will.
With parking possibly being a little tight, I think that would be kind of important.
Yes.
This time you don't, but you.
Yeah, it's, it's, it'll be part of the final site plan approval, I'm sure.
Yeah, these are, you know, issues that we are raising, and hopefully that when you come before the, if it's approved and you come before the city council, we'll have some resolution to these, be able to answer their questions, and hopefully the owner will be able to attend that meeting. I know we said that he may be able to attend this one, but it just helps that you have someone that answered the question to come up.
Absolutely.
But as we talked in the study meeting, this is a, it's a great asset. I remember that building when it had to rotate and rust around on the top, and I also remembered that it stayed vacant so long. So, that is a vital point on that corner, and the beautification that you've already done with the previous building, I know you'll do a great job on this one, and it will beautify that area, and we hope that you get it through, and we wish you a lot of luck in that.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, any other questions or concerns? Mr. Crowe?
What's, what's the approximate development cost for the renovation?
I'm around 2.7 to 3.2 right now.
Okay. So, you're aware that that triggers our art requirement?
I am not aware of it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, we can give you the, we can give you the specifics.
I've seen a huge alligator up here.
Yeah, there is a, well, you can either do art, a donation or something.
You can either do a donation or art on site.
Yeah, but we definitely, then that would, a nice piece of artwork or two on that corner would really set it off, but that's something we'll talk about later.
Okay.
There's one other question. I'm trying to remember what we talked about. It was something else, no, it was, it was the, the owner coming in to answer those questions with the marketing question. If this is approved, when do you expect to put a shovel in the ground?
Well, on the demolition side of it, I hope to get in there in a month or two when I get the approvals that I need, and that's what I'm hoping for. As far as starting work, I'm looking in the spring to actually start pulling things out and putting things in.
Okay.
So, I anticipate that you'll come for a site plan committee on Monday, January 14th. We have to confirm that, and then you will be back on the January 28th for your final approval with the city council.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Martin?
I've been looking at the blueprints that you
Yes, sir.
I haven't seen handicap parking. Handicap parking.
I know where it is. I'm not sure if it's called out as well as it should be. It's, you'll look at the entrance area and look over to the right side of the building, heading towards Watson. The handicap parking will be on that, on that side. I see two on this right here, but I'm sure there's only four units that are necessary.
It's not labeled very well.
It's hard to see on here.
Yeah. It's hard to see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, from the stage that we are today, the stage we will be when, when everybody are working on this, snow removal and many of the other areas that have been questioned were often gone through landscaping, the old prints and rules for that, so there's quite a distance to work on right now.
Right.
So, anything else to do with the city?
Yeah, yeah, these are just some final points that, you know, we want you to have available when you come through, that you can ask them. You know, the snow removal is, and I know usually you use that back far west corner when it was the old Holiday Inn.
Right.
But with the, with the parking not being an issue at this point in time, you definitely don't want to have snow, as Commissioner Huntington said, put in an area where you're taking away three or four parking spaces.
Mm-hmm.
So, that, that program has to be put together where snow will go, and again, we just need to highlight, I see the two parking, handicap parking, but we just need to highlight that a little better.
Yeah, through the chair, the actual site plans indicate nine required, 10 provided.
Oh, okay.
So, what you're looking at is just like the illustrative
Oh, okay.
Concept plan.
Kind of a, yeah.
But the actual site plan shows specifically where the barrier-free spaces are. Some of them are on the front of the entrance, some of them are on the rear, but there's nine required, 10 provided.
Even better. Commissioner Martin, you may continue.
Yeah, I noticed, and I'm saying corrected, I do see the handicap parking on the, for the rear of the building.
Right.
But then I have an issue in that the two against the building are eight-foot wide. Is that handicap? I'm sorry, van accessible with the, what is required?
The, the barrier-free standards are eight-foot wide spaces with either a five-foot or an eight-foot wide access aisle. The eight-foot wide access aisle is the barrier, the van accessible required. So, for every eight barrier-free units that are required, one has to be van accessible. And again, all those details would, you know, will be vetted from the final inspection, but they're, but they're conceptually shown on the plan right now. And they have to work. I mean, the, the access aisle has to be on an accessible route to an accessible entrance, and we check all that.
All right, Commissioner, thank you. Mr. Crowe, do you have a recommendation for us?
Yes, I can, if you're ready for it.
Yes, sir.
The planning department recommends favorable recommendation of the site plan review request of the renovation of the existing five-story hotel into an executive stay accommodations with a new drop-off canopy and reconfiguration of onsite parking on property located at 26555 Telegraph Road. Subject to the following conditions. Number one, landscaping shall be installed in accordance with all attached landscape plans. The petitioners to provide a sprinkler system for all landscape areas to encourage preservation of plant materials. The petitioner is to execute a perpetual maintenance agreement for the landscaping parking areas, both on the site and in the right-of-way, which includes maintenance of the stormwater detention system. The petitioners to implement recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Approval of the site plan and/or building elevations represented herein does not constitute nor guarantee approval for signage. Separate approval and signed permits must be obtained from the building department for any proposed signs. Exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage of glare onto adjacent properties. Bike racks shall be installed in accordance with Article 4, Section 5.29, Subsection 12. The site shall be designed and developed to contain public works of art in accordance with Section 5.22-5 Public Art, Article 4, General Requirements of the Zoning Ordinance, unless exempted based on written stipulations. This recommendation is made for the following reasons. The submitted site plan with any conditions recommended by the planning department and the planning commission will be of such size and character that will be in harmony with the appropriate orderly development of the office service district. The location, size, intensity, and periods of operation of the proposed use is designed to eliminate any possible nuisance likely to emanate therefrom, which might be adverse to occupants of any nearby permitted uses. The proposed use is in accord with the spirit and purpose of this chapter and is not inconsistent with or contrary to the objectives sought to be accomplished by the zoning ordinance and principles of sound planning. The proposed use is of such character and vehicular traffic generated will not have an adverse effect or be detrimental to the surrounding land uses or adjacent thoroughfares. The proposed uses of such character, intensity, and arrange on the site so as to eliminate any adverse effects resulting from noise, dust, dirt, glare, odor, or fumes. The proposed use will not be adverse to the promotion of health, safety, or welfare of the community, and finally, the proposed use is designed and operated so as to provide security and safety to employees and the general public.
Thank you. Commissioners, you heard the recommendation from the planning department. May I have a motion, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Mia?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the favorable recommendation for PSP 18-0012 Site Plan Review Request of Yukon Building and Development.
Support. The motion by Commissioner Mia, supported by Commissioner Willis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck and
Thank you.
See you for.
So, David, why don't you just follow up with me over the next week or two?
Yeah.
Okay? Yeah, and with the holidays and everything, would just make sure we touch base. Okay? Happy holidays.
Thank you and good luck. Commissioners, minutes. May I have approval of the minutes, please? Commissioner Martin?
Motion to approve October 2nd study meeting minutes.
Do you want to do them all?
And the November 7th and the November 14th, special meeting and the regular meeting of November 28th minutes.
Second? The motion by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Mia, that the minutes be approved October 3rd, November 7th, November 14th, and November 28th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Thank you. Mr. Crowe, you want to do the Mr. Ladies for the planning commission?
As you, many of you have been here for a while, you know that the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires the planning commissions to submit an annual report to the city council on activities that have happened in the past year as well as initiatives for the following year. This is a draft report which articulates all of the cases that you've approved over the past year. Also, it includes discussion initiatives, research topics, and review items, and it quantifies the number of planning commission meetings. 11 study meetings, 13 regular meetings, and six long-range study special meetings. Where we need input to finalize this, hopefully for your adoption in January, and then my report to the council, is if you've done any additional training, special projects or workshops, we'll, we put down what the staff has done, but we need to know. Like, for example, the security training, everybody attended, but there might be other things that you've attended in the course of, over the year, whether you went to a planning conference or workshop, or you attended something on your own that's related. Jeff and I need to know that so we can include this into the report. And then finally, what he did is he provided the initiatives from last year. Some may carry over to this year.
Right.
But items that you want to focus on for next year, we need to, to put that in the report. So, this, I'm basically giving this to you as homework over the holidays, and that we will discuss at our first workshop meeting, I believe on January 9.
Night, night, yes.
Okay? So, please come, prepare to discuss that so we can get it on the agenda. You can make a recommendation, and I can provide this report to council. But if there's anything in particular you want to ask questions on or talk about right now, we can do that as well.
Yeah. I just got one question. I was hoping that we could, you know, we took the class, three hours and a half class on the active shooter. I was hoping that, and we got the certificate, and thank you a lot, I was hoping that we could get that on the list to let the council know, just like
Yeah. I'm just saying, I noted that that needs to be added.
Oh, okay.
Jeff just gave the draft
Okay.
of these things from last year. We need to update them based on your input to us.
Okay. All right. That was the main thing, I think.
And I, with, with me being out of the office, this could have been discussed at your study session, but I wanted to make sure it was on tonight.
Understandable, yes.
So, we didn't lose them on.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions we have for Mr. Crowe? Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, we have any comments or concern? If not, we'd like to wish all our viewers a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And Mr. Crowe, you
Yeah, just one other miscellaneous is, I got to watch the first televised Planning Commission meeting, and I want to commend all of you for your professionalism, and
Oh, thank you.
It certainly was helpful to get caught up on the discussion items by being able to view it through cable 15. So, this is only our second one that's being televised, but if you happen to be absent or you want to refresh your memory on what was discussed, it is being looped a few times throughout the month, but I believe I accessed it through YouTube, so I was able to pull it up at my convenience and have it cut on in the background and watch it, and it was very informative.
Thank you. Commissioner Willis?
Thank you. Just want to, this is the last meeting of the year, I believe. Just want to make sure I wish everyone great holiday, prosperous new year, and it has been a good but short working year with you guys, and I need to say, it's been a great year working with you. So, Happy New Year to everyone, and please have a pleasant holiday.
Thank you. And that's from the whole commission. Thank you. Any other thing, Mr. Crowe?
No.
Sorry. Commissioner Martin?
I just want to say, my short term on the council, on the Planning Commission has been wonderful. I know I need more education on some of the items that we cover, but it's been wonderful, and I'm going to learn more so that I can better serve the Planning Commission.
Thank you. It's a learning process. It's a learning process, thank you. Okay? Good. Okay? If not, again, Merry Christmas happening to everybody in this, this meeting, as a term.